Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of November 13th, 2023. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Secretary please call the roll? Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut? Commissioner Lanson, absent. Commissioner Link?
Present.
Chair McMahon?
Present.
Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Zelaya. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Yeah, we have a supplemental packet that has been distributed to the Commission and posted containing information on the cancellation of public hearing 7A. That is being removed from the agenda today. It was a trade removal that was hazardous and had to be removed for safety reasons. And so therefore, it was a safety issue. No longer the public hearing is required. Also, there have been written correspondence related to item 7B that was received after the agenda packet was published.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on the agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a subsequent agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must fill out a speaker card, like In chambers or click "Request to Speak on the Agenda to Receive Instructions Before the Public Comment" portion of the agenda is called. The speaker's remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member, unless otherwise provided by the Commission. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and I'll make an amendment to that because we have so many. You will be having, I think it's three minutes. And the screen will show you the remaining time that you have. All right. So we'll start with the speakers in-house, and then we have a couple of Zoom speakers. So first, we will have Jennifer Gross, and if you'll come to the podium and state your name and city of residence. What? These are 7B? I am so sorry. These are for 7B. We just have the Zoom speakers. My mistake. So we'll have to wait till we get to that. This is for public comments. All right, so we have the Zoom comments. First is Charles Vaughn.
Neither registrants are logged on.
Neither of them. Okay. In that case, we'll just move on. If they come back, are they going to be able to speak? No? Okay. All right. Next, item six, we have the Consent Calendar with the minutes of October 23, 2023, Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments? Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. Will the Secretary please prepare us for a vote? Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Chair McMahon?
Yes.
Thank you. So item 7A has been canceled, so we can move straight to item 7B. Will the clerk please open the public hearing?
Item 7B hearing, having been advertised as required by laws here, I open to consider agenda item 7B, General Plan Amendment GPA 2019-70760-GPA, Environmental Impact Report EIR 2022-70558-IER, and Housing Element Update HSG 2018-70723-HSG, to consider a resolution recommending to City Council the certification of the final program general plan EIR, including a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, California Environmental Quality Act, Sequo Findings of Fact, Statement of Overriding Considerations, and approving the adoption of the general plan 2045 and readoption of the 2021-2029 housing element. Located citywide, the applicant is the city of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you. Presenting on behalf of staff is Interim Planning Manager Rice, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission and members of the public. Before you tonight is a presentation to consider a resolution recommending to City Council the certification of the final program EIR for the general plan 2045, including the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting plan, sequo findings of fact, the statement of overriding considerations, and approving adoption of the general plan and readoption of the housing element. Next slide. The project is being heard by the Planning Commission tonight in accordance with Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, which requires the Commission to make a recommendation to City Council prior to the adoption of the general plan. Before we get started, this is a fairly long presentation, which will cover the following items. We'll have a few slides to go over the background information of the general plan, followed by a brief overview and the public comments that were received, followed by staff's proposed recommendations to the general plan, and then we'll have a brief review of the final program EIR and the public comments that were received, and what the responses to those comments were. And then followed by that, we'll go over the Six-Cycle Housing Element, which will go over the revisions that were made in concert with the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And lastly, we'll go over staff's recommendation. And so with that, I would like to hand it over to Matt Ramey with Ramey &amp; Associates to do the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Ramey with Ramey &amp; Associates. I just wanted to start out by acknowledging that this has been a four-year process to get to this point, and it's a pretty monumentous occasion to be at this point in the general plan process. So let's start with sort of a congratulations broadly to the community for how much work has gone into this and to be here today to talk about this. I'm going to start with just an overview of the background of what a general plan is, and then move into some more specifics about the content of this general plan, and then into the public comments and recommended changes. Starting with the basics of what a general plan is, it is a document that is required under California Government Code for every city and county. Every city and county must adopt a comprehensive, long-range plan that sets forth the requirements for the agency for land use, transportation, and many other topics. Essentially, it's the long-range vision for the city, and it serves as the baseline document on which all other documents are based. There are multiple mandatory elements or chapters in the general plan, including land use, circulation, or mobility, housing, conservation, open space, noise, environmental justice, and safety. General plans can be organized in any way and can also include optional elements relevant to each jurisdiction. And as you will see, there are several elements in this general plan that the city decided to include, including governance and arts and culture. Tonight, we're also going to present on the Environmental Impact Report, which was prepared under SEQA. The California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, applies to projects that require a discretionary approval from a state or local agency. The city is determined that a program EIR is necessary to evaluate the environmental impacts of the general plan. The EIR and the SEQA process is a public disclosure and input process. The idea is to minimize, reduce, or avoid environmental impacts of a "worse-case scenario." It also includes a mitigation and monitoring program to reduce those environmental impacts. And Matt Maddox from Rincon, who is at the end of the table, will be presenting on the EIR later in the presentation. I want to start with an overview here of the process that we've been going through for the last four years. We started the process kind of behind the scenes in 2018 with the administrative side of work, but it wasn't until 2019 when we officially kicked off the project. We started with existing conditions and preparing existing conditions reports. We spent time doing listening and visioning to develop a long-term vision. We then developed policy alternatives and plan alternatives, primarily focused on land use. Then the next phase was development of the plan, and then we're here today in the review and adoption phase. Throughout the entire process was a significant amount of community engagement activities. The engagement approach is divided into two parts. The first is outreach, and the second is engagement activities. With the outreach activities, there was a lot of time spent informing the community about the process, including citywide mailings, email blasts to an email database, advertisements in city newsletters, and local newspapers. There were many, many articles in the Acorn and the VC Star. There were mailers to all properties in the areas that we called the areas of change. Flyers were distributed about the workshops and the meetings in English and Spanish. There were direct emails. There were social media posts, and there was a project website. So there was a lot of time throughout the whole process reaching out to the community from the very beginning. We also had a large number of community engagement activities where community members could come and provide their input into the process and the ideas that were before them. This included 17 General Plan Advisory Committee meetings, five community workshops, four community-wide surveys, 21 neighborhood meetings, 13 pop-up workshops, 17 stakeholder interviews, two community forums, four office hours, seven updates to the City Council, and six to the Planning Commission, and then a SEQA scoping meeting. So there was a significant amount of opportunity and time for the community to be involved, and we received thousands and thousands and thousands of comments throughout the process that served as the basis for creating the general plan. Now I'm going to switch gears a little bit and provide a brief overview of the draft general plan. This was presented to the Planning Commission over the summer, so I'll go through it briefly here. Let's start out with the plan organization. There are 14 chapters in the general plan, starting with Introduction, then the Process, which is an overview of the process of developing the plan, Vision and Guiding Principles, then the Content Chapters 4 through 13 are really the content chapters, followed by the glossary. There are other components to the general plan, including the housing element, which is under a separate cover, Appendix A, which is a summary of Public Health and Equity Report, Appendix B, which is the Emergency Evacuation Analysis, and then a separate compendium of the Engagement Summary and Reference Materials, which is over 700 pages long with all of the information from the process. Environmental justice and sustainability are two key themes that were included throughout the entire general plan. They were not created as separate elements for the general plan because of their crosscutting nature. Environmental justice addresses health, pollution, and income disparities within the community, and sustainability addresses topics related to climate change, natural environment, green buildings, and other related topics. A note that when you're looking at the general plan, if you see a red heart with a plus sign, those are policies that relate to health equity and environmental justice, and the green leaf is policies related to sustainability. The third chapter of the general plan is the Vision and Guiding Principles. The vision is a brief vision statement describing the future state of the city and what the city will look like in the future. You can see the vision statement here on the screen. Then there are the Guiding Principles, which have two components to them. One is the core values, and the second is the major strategies. The community values, core values of the community, are listed here, and there are 15 here, which identify broadly what the community holds most dear. And these are the values that the entire general plan is based on. The next section is the major strategies, and this is how the vision and values will be achieved throughout the general plan at a high level. Think about it sort of as a broad executive summary. And it's both shown in map form here, where you see some of those major strategies, as well as text for those topics that can't be mapped, topics such as expanding the number and types of entertainment options, and expanding the high-quality diversity and accessibility of public facilities and services. One of the core pieces of the general plan is the land use element, and this is what most people think of when they think about the general plan, because it really defines what the future built environment will look like in the city. The land use element is designed to accommodate and plan for the necessary change within the community. It needs to comply with the state regulations related to land use, of which there have been many, many over the last dozen or so years. The general plan also includes a land use designation map, and this defines the future intended use on every single parcel within the city. There are 17 designations in five land use categories, nine residential designation, one mixed use, three commercial, two industrial, and two institutional designations. And it's important to note that the map that is included in the general plan is a map that was endorsed by the City Council after multiple meetings in May of 2021. Except for some very minor cleanup items, this map has not been changed, and it is the map that was again included in the general plan. The land use element also includes a series of citywide goals for topics related to infill development, preserving residential neighborhoods, housing diversity, economic development, preserving views and vistas, green buildings, and then healthy living. The next element, Chapter 5, is the mobility element, and this describes the multimodal transportation system in the community. It includes goals and policies related to all aspects of transportation, including vehicles, freight, transit, and active and safe transportation. Chapter 6 is the Parks and Open Space element, and this chapter includes topics related to parks, open space, and recreational programs. And it includes goals and policies for topics such as the Ring of Green Space around the city, preserving natural areas, encouraging outdoor recreation, park and open space funding, and providing a diversity of programs within parks and open spaces. Chapter 7 is the Conservation element, and this addresses the identification, conservation, development, and use of natural resources in the city. Goals and policies relate to visual impacts, the community forest, oak and landmark trees, and historic and cultural resources. Chapter 8 is Community Facilities and Services, and this chapter describes the condition, accessibility, and level of service for public facilities and services, which we know from the very beginning of the process that residents of the community really hold very dear. It includes goals and policies related to the high-quality community facilities. It has topics related to infrastructure, such as water, stormwater, and wastewater. Includes topics for public safety, and then educational and healthcare facilities. Chapter 10, and I know I'm going out of order here, I'll get back to nine in just a minute, is the Safety Element. And this again is a very important element, particularly for this community, because it addresses the natural and human-induced hazards and building resilience against climate change risks. It includes goals and policies related to seismic hazards, landslides, soil hazards, flooding, wildfire, climate change, terrorism, and disease. Chapters 9, 11, and 12 relate to arts and culture, noise, and governance. Arts and culture is a chapter that the city decided to include in the general plan due to the commitment to arts and culture in the community. And this chapter includes goals and policies to support and enhance the vibrant cultural environment and the creative economy related to arts and culture. The noise element is one of the required elements of the general plan, and it addresses noise conditions throughout the city, including existing and future noise contours based on the expected levels of transportation and traffic in the community. Chapter 12 is Governance. This is another optional element that the city decided to include in the plan, and it includes goals and policies for the city to continue being a properly functioning and responsive and participatory governmental entity. Chapter 13 is the Implementation Chapter. The previous chapters really focus on goals and policies, and Chapter 13 focuses on the specific actions that will implement the vision and achieve the goals and policies. The chapter is organized by General Plan chapter, and it includes descriptions, timeframes, lead responsibility, and corresponding goals. The timeframe is identified as a symbol, and you can see here on the screen what those symbols signify. The draft general plan was released on June 2nd of this year and opened for public comment. And the public comment feedback forum was open from June 2nd until September 15th of this year. So we solicited public feedback primarily through the online comment forum, but there were also several letters that were submitted to the city that were incorporated. We received approximately 200 comments. Some of those were just individual comments within the feedback forum. Some of those were letters with multiple comments. Most people submitted comments on multiple chapters, and there were specific comments on just about every chapter in the general plan. The staff report includes the list of all of the comments that were received, organized by chapter, as well as the changes that are going to be made to the general plan. Just providing a very brief overview of the range of public comments that were received, again, there were comments received and ideas about just about every single chapter in the general plan. But very broadly, some of the comments, there were themes about concerns about growth, including traffic and parking impacts. There were comments on specific parcels, including the Borchardt site, Jan's Marketplace, the Oaks Mall, Village Centers, as well as others. There was a desire for more active transportation in the city, including walking and biking. There were concerns about emergency evacuation related to growth, but also the emergency evacuation analysis. There was a desire for more emphasis on GHG reduction measures, and then there was a desire for more proactive preservation of cultural and historic resources. Based on these comments, as well as comments from other public agencies, a series of recommended changes are being proposed for the general plan, and this is also included in the staff report. In summary, there are more than 40 new or amended policies that are being recommended related to the housing element program, voter initiatives, area-specific guidance, CAL FIRE review of the safety element, transportation innovations, native landscaping, construction management, and school programming, among others. There's also going to be some updated background information in multiple chapters, including Introduction, Open Space, the listing of historic resources, school facilities, arts and culture, and the appendices. And then there's updated data on figures and diagrams, including wetlands, school facilities for evacuation planning, Measure W, and then Village Centers. Diving in a little bit deeper in some of the proposed changes, for the land use element, there are new policies, new or amended policies based on HCD, or the State Housing and Community Development Department, requirements to further encourage housing in commercial areas. These changes include encouraging mixed use on underperforming retail properties, infill residential on underutilized parking lots, encouraging the subdivision of larger mixed use parcels or parking lots for residential buildings, policies to encourage consolidation of smaller lots, and this really applies to the mixed use areas of the Oaks, Jan's Marketplace, the Village Centers, and then the other mixed use areas, including along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. There is also a recommendation to add a new policy to the land use element to goal number one, Policy LU 1.1, which is a reference to the Measure E requirements, to the extent it's required by its terms or otherwise exempted. In Land Use Figure 4.4, this figure will be updated to include Measure W, the SAVE Open Space and Agricultural Resources, or SOAR. There will be an addition of the "curb line," the addition of the 1998 planning area boundary, and the identification of land uses outside of the sphere of influence but within the planning area, and the addition of all parks, golf courses, and open space areas. There are some other map changes, including moving highway icons for readability, as well as correcting the Seventh Day Adventist North property on the west side of the city, which doesn't match exactly the property lines. For other land use area-specific policies, the Oaks Mall for Policy LU 15.3, there's a recommendation to remove the prohibition of new standalone big-box retail stores, and that's in order to maintain flexibility due to shifts in market conditions. For Moore Park Road and Jan's Marketplace, Policy 16.1 will be amended using "encourage" instead of "require" for a specific plan due to the large number of properties in this area. However, for Policy LU 16.5, which refers directly to Jan's Marketplace, there is the addition of requiring the preparation of a specific plan for this area, for Jan's Marketplace, to be more specific. For Policy 18.4, which refers to the Borchardt property, there were several changes that are being proposed, including the removal of a specific location along a Royal Creek for the bike path improvements and the connections between neighborhoods and the site, the removal of a policy for mitigation within the flood plain because this is covered in the safety element and therefore redundant in this element. The specific street connections mentioned in the policy in the public draft general plan were removed because this is already required in the specific plan, and specific locations will be identified during the development review process. And then changing the maximum three-story height limit, or 35 feet, from 200 feet to 100 feet for adjacent to existing neighborhoods, because this provides a significant buffer. The 100 feet provides a significant buffer. For the Parks, Open Space, and Conservation elements, there is a recommendation to add Policy POS 1.6, which references compliance with Measure W ordinance to the extent required by its terms, and to add Measure W into a new appendix, Appendix C. For the Conservation element, the Figure 7.4 of the wetlands, the figure will be updated to be consistent with the EIR exhibit, and Policy 10.7 will be added to require health risk assessments for new development with specific criteria. For the Safety element, this element was actually revised after the release of the public draft general plan, and it was revised based on coordination with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Prevention, or CAL FIRE, and it was viewed for consistency with state legislation, and it was also revised and approved by the Safety Board of Forestry. The revisions include information on wildfire history and prevention planning, and there's new policies that address wildfires, long-term fuel reduction, siting of new development, water supply, evacuation, and emergency vehicle access, and emergency service needs. This is one of those revised maps that was included in the Safety element as required by AB 2911, which is the Emergency Evacuation Analysis for neighborhoods with a single point of access. There were some other additional changes that were made to the general plan that are recommended to be made, including minor language changes to background section for clarity and accuracy, typographical errors and spacing issues, changing out a few different photographs, removing Implementation Action CA 13 for native plant viability, and that was removed upon consultation with COSCA. So that's a summary. Clearly, there are more changes, and there's more detail to those changes that are included in the staff report. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Matt Maddox from Rincon, who was the lead on preparing the Environmental Impact Report. Matt, would you like to come sit here and run the slide, or should I? You want to do it from there?
I'll just tell you.
Okay.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, as Matt McRae suggested. I'm Matt Maddox with Rincon Consultants. We were the firm who assisted the city in the preparation of the environmental impact report. Tonight, we're just going to come to do a broad overview of some of those pieces, similar to the general plan, just explain the process, and then update you on what we heard as a result of the public review process, which concluded in September. Next slide, Matt. So where are we in the process? Matt kind of highlighted what SEQA is, the California Environmental Quality Act. This lays out the steps that began back in June of 2022, when we began with a notice of preparation process. Where we are in the process now is after going through a formal review and hearing the public both on what to be included as part of the environmental impact report, and then preparing that analysis and releasing the public draft for a 45-day public review period that closed on September 25. We then took for, brought forward the process of the final EIR, which includes a response to comments, a mitigation monitoring reporting program, and the findings and statement of overriding consideration, which we'll highlight shortly. So before you tonight is the summary of all those published as part of the final EIR. First, a first step in this process is to be before you, the planning commission tonight, followed by the city council as it moves forward for consideration of the general plan. It will also need to certify the environmental impact report as a separate, as a separate action. Next slide. Little bit of background on the EIR, and one thing to point out is that this EIR that was prepared for the general plan is a program EIR, a little bit different than a project-level SEQA document, meaning that it looks at a series of connected actions that will govern the future activities and decisions rather than a specific development project on a single parcel or property. What that is especially for a general plan is that we're looking at the, the policies and implementation actions as a whole, is what the, the change could be through the planning horizon year of the general plan and anticipated impacts, physical impacts to the environment that may be caused by the general plan adoption. Next slide. In summary, as, and this is a little bit of a update compared to what when we presented during the public review process before you commissioners, we looked at all the environmental impact issue areas as required by state law. For the issues areas that are listed on this slide, no environmental impacts or no mitigation was necessary for a good majority of them. Next slide, Matt. For some of the mitigation measures, or excuse me, for some of the issue areas, mitigation was required. In some cases, it was site-specific or mitigation for construction impacts or operational impacts that'll be assessed when individual projects, as they come forward as part of the general plan, planning horizon come forward. For some, there were recommendations for either policy or implementation measure updates or edits to the general plan and had been, have gone forward from that standpoint. Next slide. And for some issue areas, five in particular, air quality, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and transportation, the EIR analysis found that there were significant and unavoidable impacts. And what that means is that while impacts are identified and mitigation may be available, there is not feasible mitigation that would absolutely result in a less-than-significant impact once implemented. So it was determined as part of the analysis that those would be significant and unavoidable. And as such, the city is required to make findings and adopt a statement of overriding consideration to demonstrate that the process determined that there were significant unavoidable impacts, and if moving forward and adopting the general plan, that the benefits of that, of the process outweigh the environmental impacts. So that is before you tonight, as well as the package, including in, in the findings and statement of overriding consideration. Next slide, Matt. Now to summarize some of the public comments that were received for the EIR public review process. Again, we had a 45-day public review, beginning on August 11 and concluding on September 25. Comments were received from state and local agencies and from individuals. Forty-three written comments were received, and all of those written comments are responded to as part of the final EIR package. Now to highlight a couple of the, the specific areas of comments for environmental impacts, Matt. We received a couple regarding air quality comments that resulted in some clarifications and suggestions for air quality regulation thresholds and mitigation. Some of those were from the Ventura County Air Pollution and Control District for guidelines and methodology, which were updated. And then some of the air quality mitigation was altered to add clarity to the process. I do want to highlight for this topic and for all the remaining ones, while the clarifications and updates resulted in some minor changes, which are highlighted in the final EIR, they did not result in new impacts or increase in the severity of the impacts. Next slide. For cultural resources, there was a request to include some more information about historic resources and a concern over the lack of readily available information on cultural and historic relevant resources in the city. This was a similar comment that we received as part of the general plan as well, and some of those updates have been built into the general plan elements as needed. There was also a requested clarification of paleontological resources and the mitigation measure, and that was slightly updated. Again, similarly, the edits and updates that are contained in the Addenda Arrata section of the final EIR note the, note those changes, but none of those resulted in any increase of impacts or new impacts that weren't already identified. We received a couple questions and corrections regarding the Ventura County Certified Unified Program Agency Emergency Response, also known as COOPA, Hazmat Team, so minor clarifications that were added to the regulatory setting portion of the Hazard Section of the IR. We also received a number of questions regarding the traffic volumes used to estimate and project traffic noise, and a general concern over traffic noise from a couple commenters. There were some suggested revisions to the traffic noise mitigation, and again, those clarifications were added and are demonstrated in the final EIR, but don't result in a change of the impacts. Again, similarly, because it is significant and unavoidable, we tried to tighten some of the pieces to ensure that it is mitigated to the level it can. We can't guarantee with certainty that it will be reduced to a less-than-significant level. Next slide. And, and we also received comments on the public services and recreation, a suggestion to modify the parkland or residence ratio, and a request for more parks and open space. Really, these aren't really necessarily EIR-related impact questions, but more related to the desire and vision for the community as a whole. Transportation comments received. There was a request for the explanation of the average daily trip volumes methodology, and there was some clarification and response to that, as well as some updates to clarify the language in Appendix D of the final, of the final EIR. There was an emphasis on the need for VMT mitigation and further suggestions, VMT being a newer issue in California that's required as part of SEQA compared to the older level of service analysis that was done. Again, that was determined to be a significant impact, but there are implementation actions built into the general plan for follow-on VMT analysis to come. And then there was also some updates and corrections to the regulatory framework, some key pieces to update from that standpoint. Again, none of the, none of the suggestions or edits result in any new impacts or a change of the analysis. And finally, wildfire comments, wildfire being a newer issue in SEQA, and as well as a major component as part of the safety element. There were some questions and comments regarding the evacuation analysis that was done as part of the safety element process, and the clarifications provided for the safety element, and we basically ensured how, how the methodology was used for the evacuation analysis and the next steps to follow in the years to come, as well as how it's addressed from a wildfire perspective under SEQA. Next slide. With that, I'll turn back to Matt.
Okay. I'm going to just spend a minute talking about the 21 to 29 housing element, which is a, one of the chapters of the general plan. So the six-cycle housing element, which was previously adopted and then went to the, to HCD for additional comments, is, really aims to achieve several overarching themes, including accommodating housing demands as mandated by the state, providing a wider range of housing opportunities for all people at all income levels, as well as those with special needs, maintaining and improving the housing stock, preserving affordable housing, and meeting the requirements for the AFFH, or Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing, which is a requirement that is a new component for housing elements in the sixth cycle. The housing element timeline, the housing element was prepared on a separate timeline from the rest of the general plan, and it was done under a separate cover. One of the reasons that this is done is because the housing element is required to be updated every eight years, and it is required to be reviewed by and approved by HCD or the State Department of Housing and Community Development. The housing element was adopted by the city on January 25, 2022. It was submitted to the state for certification, and there were additional rounds and revisions through July of 2023. In, on September 8 of 2023, there was a letter from HCD that said that the city's housing element met most of the statutory requirements under state law. It does require that rezoning happen in order to certify the housing element, and that rezoning is only possible after adoption of the general plan. There were some revisions based on the comments from HCD, some revisions to the housing element, so it will need to be readopted as part of this process. There was a new program of five added, which was shopping centers and commercial redevelopment. As you heard previously in the presentation, there were measures added to the general plan in order to incentivize and streamline infill at non-vacant sites, underutilized sites, specifically existing commercial centers, which were identified for housing sites. There's an additional, additional objectives for, provided for programs 15 through 18, and these topics relate to fair housing outreach and enforcement, housing mobility, new opportunities in high resource areas, and then neighborhood improvement programs. There was an updated AFFH, Meaningful Actions Matrix, and an updated list of pipeline and pending projects included in the housing element. So the changes were relatively minor overall. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Kristen.
Okay, I got, I get the last slide, which is the staff recommendation to city council, which is to adopt a resolution based on the findings contained there and recommending that city council certify the final program, general plan EIR, including a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, the SEQA findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, and also to approve the general plan amendment 2019-70760-GPA with the revisions included in the Addenda Arrata memo, and to three, readopt the housing element I do want to make note, before we move on, in the supplemental number one that was sent out this afternoon, we are proposing a couple of changes to, in particular, which are typographical errors to attachment one, which is the resolution. And then there are also a number of changes proposed to attachment number one, Exhibit D, which is the Addenda Arrata for changes to be made to the general plan. In addition to the items that are on the supplemental, staff would like to add one additional item, so this would be to add a number 52 to attachment number one, Exhibit D, which is on page 185 of the general plan. This would be to change the first, the first sentence, which is in the arts and culture element, to instead read that the Civic Arts Plaza was originally authorized in 1987. So that is to provide information that is historically accurate compared to what was originally written. And so that is it for the staff presentation this evening. I do want to mention that also in addition to me here this evening, senior planner Ian Holt is here to my left, and Matt Maddox from Rincon Associates is here also. In the audience, we have DPAC Koshak from I-Terris, and we also have a few members from the Public Works Department, including Mark Bueno and Jim Mashiko and Helen Cox. I see you, but I wasn't expecting you here tonight, so if you are here to address comments, then here you are. And also, we have Lexi Journey from Rincon Consultants in the back. So that concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. That was very thorough. We've got piles of paper here that we plowed through this week. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Ferris?
Why you asked me right away, I don't know. These are a lot of my questions. First of all, I want to thank staff for receiving and responding to all of my questions over the weekend and providing them, I think, to the, the rest of the commission. I also want to commend the staff, the public, those that participated in the long crafting of this document for bringing it to our attention, folding in all the comments, being able to have the understanding of, of, being able to craft this policy for the city council and the, and the future planning for, for the city. So I just want to thank everyone for all the hard work that's gone into this. I do have a few questions that I did provide, and thank you for the answers to that. I wanted to highlight a few for the public just so that they have an understanding of what is in the document and, and what the answers were. So one of my first questions, and I'm going to ask a few, and then I'll ask the remainder of the commission to go ahead, because I do have a few others. But one was respect to floor area ratio and densities and how we would tend to apply them with respect within the mixed use designation. So many of the folks within the, the city are used to residential designations have densities, units per acre, the commercial areas or wherever that they can, we generally haven't had floor area ratios, but within those, it's reasonably clear, if it's a one-acre property, you can have, if it's a 1.0 floor area ratio, you could have roughly 43,000 square feet on the property, either half on the property with two stories or one full story. So there's a lot, some flexibility there. I wanted to get an understanding of how it would be applied in the mixed use area. My understanding is written is that there, the limit for the residential densities could be up to 30 units per acre, and that the floor area ratio for the non-residential parts could be up to a 1.0 FAR, subject to the conditions of the zoning to allow it one way or another. But those two maxima, they could be within both of them, depending upon the, the nature of the project and what's allowed. Is that the right way we will be thinking about projects that are in mixed use designations?
Yes.
Easy, easy answer. Thank you. Hopefully, that's helpful for the public to understand what, what may go into some of those areas. I wanted to also thank you. There was one clarification I did want to make from Mr. Ramey's presentation in, first of all, thank you for the inclusion of the voter inclusion measures within the general plan, Measure E and Measure W. Measure W will have an appendix in Appendix C for that. It wasn't mentioned in Mr. Ramey's presentation, but I think there's going to be an Appendix D for Measure E as well. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I did have one question about the cultural mitigation. It was identified in EIR as a significant and unavoidable impact, and we've identified a mitigation measure that would, as, as it's been amended, would say if determined necessary based on a preliminary review conducted by city staff, project applicant will submit a report to the city identifying any historical age features, which are structures over 45 years of age. The, at least as written, it sort of implies that the staff of the city is generally aware of anything that may very well be of historical significance, or at least for evaluation. Is it, is, is that the way, the stance of, of what's being proposed here to help with that mitigation?
I think the intent of the clarification was to ensure that there's a, there's some objective review without it being a requirement for any building over 45 years or older requiring a full-blown historic evaluation. So in terms of looking at it, and the way it's written is that, and for, for background for, for members of the public, typically a building that's over 50 years of old, 50 years of age or older could be potentially historic and needs to go through some additional steps. So the way we've written the, the mitigation that ultimately becomes a policy to, to be checked upon upon review when there is potential demolition or modification to a building that could damage a potential historic resource was to ensure that some buffer of 45 years or older. But the way it was originally phrased in the draft EIR is basically any building over 45 years or older would need to basically do a historical evaluation. So we wanted to add an additional layer as part of the plan check. When, when an application comes in, that city staff would have the ability to review and ensure that if it's, on the surface, it's a home that was built 45 years or older that has no, on the surface, no historical resource connection, that those would be bypassed and not have to go through the full environmental review. So, so it takes some of the So it takes some of the burden off the, the owners of properties, with the exception of not, not necessarily giving more leeway for historic resources to be damaged.
And I can understand that differentiation there. The, the one thing I just want to try and gain an understanding of is there is, is that how, how can the city take a more open position to receive information from the public to ensure that, that the evaluation by city staff is one that can continue, shouldn't require it, understand that that's what the nature of the language was. But this can be that if city staff isn't aware of it, it could go down the process and, and not be evaluated. Is there an additional mitigation measure that we can have as a, as a policy that can make sure that we're receptive to information? Every year, some buildings are going to be more likely to kind of hit that threshold, and if we think it's a significant impact, we ought to try to have a policy that's forward looking on that.
Well, Commissioner Ferris, I mean, in terms of, you know, as you've written the comment, you were requesting that a policy be added in addition to the mitigation measure, that basically required regular meetings by the city's cultural heritage board, recommending annually. You know, that is something that is more of a policy decision for the city council to decide. It's not necessarily a CEQA requirement at this time.
So if that is something that the cultural heritage board during its meetings were opening up to solicit that input, I mean, that would be the venue to do that.
That makes complete sense. Just to, for the public's awareness, the last time the cultural heritage board met was in 2004. So I would say, you know, some of the comments that we've received have generally been by people who have genuinely interested in preserving the history of our city and consistently sort of made noise to make sure that, that we become aware of it. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can be more regularly open to hearing about that without, without that happening. And that's the, the reason for it. And I guess what the question would be, do we have any role in that, or when we, must we require a city council on its own to think about having a policy like that, or can we recommend it?
Well, I mean, in terms of a policy for the general plan, that could be something that could be considered, albeit the mitigation measure, I think, is really the first step to actually begin that engagement, because staff would be screening these projects, determining if further historic assessment would be done, and typically that would be rolled into some level of CEQA analysis associated with the project, and then presented to planning commission or the city council at that time. So, you know, that's kind of the, the format that under the current recommended mitigation measure, it would kind of
Okay.
Provide that information.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll hand it over for other commissioners' questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Link.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to everybody for your presentation. I think that was probably more concise than some of the presentations we've received on residential development, so very much appreciated. I'm going to stay in my lane and stick to traffic, surprise, surprise. But first, let's start off with, generally as part of a general plan effort, the city adopts a threshold of significance, as we're used to seeing, especially with regard to level of service, which we are, maybe I'll digress and, and give everybody a quick lesson on what VMT is, but maybe not. I guess I'll let Patrick stare me down, but Mr. Heer, excuse me. Does the city plan to adopt a threshold of significance within the general plan with regard to VMT?
So from a CEQA perspective, there, there was no adopted threshold at this point that we utilize as part of the, as part of the EIR. So we use the Office of Planning and Research recommended threshold that's used at the statewide level, which is somewhat different than the, what the city has been using as part of individual plan review for projects. But the reason we went with that route is because we have not yet, and the general plan does not yet propose a formal VMT impact threshold to be determined. However, there is an implementation action as part of the, as part of the general plan circulation element to develop a study to analyze that, to then come up with the appropriate threshold that the city will have from that basis, as opposed to relying on the statewide recommendation, which is 15% below existing baseline conditions. So the, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ian, but the, the idea is ultimately that once the general plan is adopted, the city will then need to move forward with implementation action to do the full analysis, the nexus study, if you will, to determine what the appropriate VMT threshold would be for the city to then apply on a project by project basis moving forward.
So would that be an action that is separate of the general plan, or would a general plan amendment be required to adopt that?
No, a general plan amendment would not be required. It would be a matter of policy and essentially a follow through with an implementation measure identified in the general plan.
Understood. Okay. Along the same lines, so the EIR does mention that a, well, the Ventura County transportation model was utilized to determine the background VMT for the city. Is originally part of this effort, and the majority of us have been along for the ride for at least three of the, the last four years, but was a city specific model developed, or was the VCTM as it was developed for VCTC utilized to determine that background VMT?
The model for VCT, from VCTC was utilized for specifically the general plan growth anticipated through the general plan horizon, so a city of Thousand Oaks specific baseline and projection impact, the, the net increase of vehicle miles traveled associated with the general plan was conducted for the IR purposes. So moving forward for the next step and for the implementation measure process, there is a baseline condition that can be built upon, but a standalone model for the city of Thousand Oaks was not, was not produced.
Understood. Thank you. I, I think that takes care of it. I mean, the, the only question I have, it was lingering from, you know, my perspective as being a city traffic engineer, is whether the city sort of runs afoul, going back and forth between enshrining in the environmental document that we're looking at a 15%, but up until now, the city has used 0% increase in VMT. Does that pose a risk to the city?
We don't believe so. The, the reason being, and why we use 15% was to be as conservative as possible, since we did not have a nexus study to use the threshold that the city's been doing for individual projects, looking at it in a program EIR, we wanted to focus on what the statewide general recommendation is, until such time as the city has conducted the, the nexus study to determine what the appropriate VMT threshold is for, for Thousand Oaks project moving forward.
As a worst case analysis for CEQA.
Correct.
Okay, understood. All right, thank you very much.
I think that's the answer, is that we are looking for, for the EIR, we are doing a general review of it, and so that's why, as Ms. Maddox said, we're using the 15%, but for case specific projects, we have our own policy that we were using, and of course, the plan is to move that plan forward, move that analysis forward after the general plan is adopted.
Actually, one last question, because this is a nebulous topic, and even I don't understand the nuances of VMT as a practitioner of VMT. We still have meetings to discuss how to handle this. Could we have a quick overview of what vehicle miles traveled means? Real fast, I can do it, but it's probably not my place.
Real fast, I could do that. We also have Deepak from iTerris, who could come down and give a much more detailed, so Deepak, you step up if I'm, if I'm mistaken, but in a, in a general term, vehicle miles traveled is the length of a single trip, added to the, the return trip, and the overall estimate of miles traveled, rather than looking at a standalone trip as the, as the measurement. So when you're, when we're measuring vehicle miles traveled, it's the, it's the cumulative of the, the miles that a vehicle goes from start to finish of that trip, and then the return if, if there is a return trip back.
Yep, that's generally correct, but I would say, just to clarify, level of service, the old way, the old way of doing CEQA versus vehicle miles traveled, we just kind of think of it as level of service is a local congestion measure, whereas VMT, vehicle miles traveled, is a regional mobility metric. So it's a way of pretty much seeing how a project would affect the region, as opposed to affect the intersection or intersections next to a project or down the street from a project. So it's two different ways to look at it. The state has gone with the, with the way, which is more effective for mitigating greenhouse gas emissions, well, using VMT. So VMT means vehicle miles traveled, so it's, like, like Matt said, it's a measure of a single vehicle and the distance that it travels. Essentially, it's a multiplication. Vehicle travels 10 miles, that's a VMT of 10. If you multiply, if there's 10 vehicles that do it, that's 100 VMT. And typically for environmental projects such as this and standalone developments, VMT is measured as an index, so it's not just the number of VMT, it's VMT divided by a measure of persons, whether that be residents, VMT per capita, or residents and employees, that's VMT per service population. So that's hopefully a simple explanation, but let me know if you have any questions.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Kettlehut, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I, I do have a comment. I want to say thank you to our consultants and to city staff for this remarkable document and the fact that you've been pushed, prodded, cajoled, honed in for the last four years, and the exhaustive process that you engaged the community in, because that's why we sit up here, is to be the voice for them, and you've been, it, it was exhaustive, the process you engaged in, so I just want to thank you for that and for the, for the presentation tonight.
Commissioner Ferris, did you have more?
I do, but you didn't have any?
You guys have asked my questions.
Okay, all right, let me continue. I, I did have one question, which wasn't immediately answered over the weekend, but in the EIR, there is a listing of local regulations that I had noted that section 4.6.2D is a local regulation regarding the land use and planning, did not have measures W or E in it. Would it be appropriate to include that in the EIR document?
So what you're referring to is in the different analysis sections of the EIR, there is a background section that talks about regulatory framework, and within that there is local regulations, which is primarily cited as the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. And, you know, by virtue of, at this point, staff would recommend there's no changes, because, I mean, adding that information doesn't necessarily change the EIR analysis and so forth, and also, both measures E and W are by reference in the municipal code that is stated as the regulator, the local regulation. So basically, the, the measures are basically cited as they pertain to the application of general plan amendments within the municipal code already, so.
That's fine. I did have one question, and I wanted to gain an understanding of what is the appropriate legal way to end up asking about this. In the recommendation resolution, it states, I'm trying to find where I, where I wrote this, that effectively the approval of the, of this general plan, the intent is to replace the previous general plan of its elements in its entirety. The measure E and measure W are part of the general plan, so we would not be able to replace it. You're replacing all the other parts, but you're keeping these intact. And so I had requested, is, is it appropriate for in the resolution to state clearly that it's not our intent to end up changing anything with respect to measure E or W, or any, any land uses that are parched golf course and open space, because my understanding is, the intent is not to have, to go to the voters for approval of it. If for some reason down the road, we find that a parcel was mislabeled or misplayed or something like that, there could be confusion as to whether it was intentional to make that change or not. I think it's pretty clear from all of us here, is the intention is not to do that. This has been one of the reasons why we've been making changes to what's on the map, to ensure there are no changes. But what I'm worried about is confusion in the future. People make mistakes. It happens. There, there are maps that, that, that don't, don't quite make it full, the 100% vetting. I just don't want there to be any confusion as to what the city is going to do with its entire, you know, in approving this general plan. So I wanted to get at least staff or city attorney's view on what is the best approach to state that intent, if that is in fact the intent.
So I'll start off, and then if staff wants to add, they certainly can. I don't, I don't think there's a necessity to change or to add anything more for clarity. I think the fact that we have our Thousand Oaks Municipal Code that identifies those measures, they are attached as part of the general plan and, and the policies. I think with that, we have the clarity that we need and, and staff in the future would need. We're always going to have situations where there's going to be a mistake based on confusion, or, or someone just didn't realize there was a policy or a law for, in fact, that results in a need to address that, and you can do that through a number of, of actions, whether it's initiated by the city itself or by somebody else who says, hey, you didn't follow this rule or this policy. So I think that's the safeguard that we would have for any of these things, whether it's measure E, measure W, or many other policies that we have, and it will continue to be in that way. You know, I, I bring up cell sites, for example, and oak trees and things of that nature, where we sometimes have a situation where someone doesn't catch something, and so a mistake has happened, and then we go back and we say, no, this is our policy, this is our law, and based upon that, we make the corrections as necessary, or we respond to a challenge as necessary. So I think in that sense, I think we're okay with the way it is. I don't think, I mean, I certainly wouldn't recommend any further changes to, for clarity at this time, but I certainly will let the experts that we have here tonight address that as well.
Thank you, Patrick. Actually, I think you replied just perfectly well. That was basically essentially what we would say.
Is that it? Are you?
No, I have a couple others, but just in response to that, I've, I've been on these sides of it where it was not clear, and then later on, we said, oops, we made a mistake. This is really the, you know, what it really was. We're in a position to where we can actually state what the clear intent is, which is there are things we do not intend to change, but all the rest of it, we do in according to this, and it just would seem prudent to me, but I, I understand the position that staff has taken. One question I have is respect to the policies for the safety element, specifically in the flood hazards section. Many of the policies that we see throughout the, throughout the general plan, you can generally tie them kind of back to original policies. We're sort of keeping many of them the same, might be some slight wording differences, but, but in general, they're, they're the same. The flooding, flood hazard ones is, they're kind of moving around a little bit, but there's a few that I'm trying to understand, is the, the nature of the hazards with respect to, as were stated in our policy, the risk of life, the risk of loss of life, injury, damage to property, and economic and social dislocations resulting from inundation by dam failure and floods. Have those changed in the past, let's say, 25 years since the policies we currently have in our general plan? Have they been in effect?
Are you asking that, is there like a greater area of dam inundation, or, I mean, is there a greater threat of these hazards? I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
Either greater or less of, of impact. I mean, we have, we have policies in our safety element right now in the general plan that specifically have either prohibitions or directions to locate structures outside of 100 foot, year flood plains, and those are no longer in the new one. They are changed, but they're not specifically called out with respect to 100 year flood plains. So I'm wondering if something has changed that we feel that that is no longer necessary to call out with respect to the stated policy and the goal. to call out with respect to the stated policy and the goal.
So I think there's just a nuance in the language that is in the general plan. I mean, it refers to flood hazard areas zones, of which the 100-year flood plain is included. It may include actually other flood areas as well. So it is written more broadly. So it's not to exclude, you know, any policy within the 100-year flood plain. But, you know, we have Policies 4.1 that talks about new development in flood zones, which basically would defer to, you know, going through, you know, evaluation of the project design, going to FEMA for a possible, you know, letter of map provision, you know, subject to the design approval and so forth. So there's all those steps that are still required for any type of development, as well as the following policy, 4.2, still talking about, you know, prohibit the citing of essential facilities in the flood zone. So they're just slightly worded differently in a more general sense, but they have the same meaning.
But, I mean, if we had, one of the policies that we did have is locate structure, this is C6 in the current safety element, locate structures in additions outside the 100-year flood plain, unless such facilities are necessary to serve existing uses and construction of these structures will not increase the hazard to life and property with the inner adjacent to the flood plain. Then it talks about the municipal code sections requiring certification, so it doesn't result in an increase in flood levels during the occurrence of a 100-year flood. Is that no longer specifically worthy to have as a policy within our general plan? I'm concerned, I understand the sort of like recrafting the language, making it broader, but it can also seem like it might be more easily softened with respect to what our
I mean, these are all things that are regulated outside of our own local policies in terms of how the permit procedures and the evaluation occurs.
We did specifically highlight this one in our housing element, though.
Which policy you're referring to?
C6.
So, yeah, just to note, yeah, I mean, the housing element does refer to existing land use policies because, you know, it's writing what was effective at that time. C6 would typically be a conservation measure. Yeah, I mean, you know, these are all things that really are addressed more at the project level.
I seem to think that the nature, the policy's been around in our general plan since 96 and updated in the 2014 element. I'm kind of wondering, it just would seem to me it might be prudent to continue with it. Until such time as the additional policy, which is in there, which talks about partnering with the Ventura County Watershed Protection District to complete drainage improvements to enable parcels to be removed from the 100-year flood plain, that might, it might seem to be, it'd be good to have policies regarding and continuing our safety policies until that time happens where there are no structures in the 100-year flood plain.
I'm sorry, were you just citing the old element right now?
The one about partnering Ventura County Watershed Protection District is part of the new one. It's 4.7.
Uh huh.
So that's a new policy. So we're going to work to remove parcels from the 100-year flood plain as a policy. But until such time as that happens, it might make sense to continue with the older policy that we've had in the city in our safety element.
I think it goes back to the first policies that we talked about, 4.1, 4.2, that cover any new development within a 100-year flood plain, and that will be evaluated at the project level.
Okay. All right. One last, one last item. I did ask about this in our, in one of my questions, so I want to thank you for it, but the Measure E analysis, Measure E does, you know, request in any general plan amendment, we evaluate whether the increases and decreases cumulatively exceed the baselines that we have in the ordinance. And we did mention that the residential capacity is the same based upon where the new designations are and the amount of acreage for each of them. I didn't see the commercial acreage analysis for Measure E.
Well, the attachment contains the acreage for the proposed commercial designations, and those are less than the existing general plan.
They are?
Yes, because essentially you have commercial designations that have now become mixed use.
So you're saying if it's commercial, but I'm going to make it mixed use, I'm actually reducing the number of acres that are for commercial use?
Well, that are strictly for commercial use.
But that's the interpretation, is that we're reducing the number of acres for commercial as a result of this general plan?
Yes.
That is not historically, one, I don't believe on its face that makes sense, because we've talked about a floor area ratio in which we're allowing for particular commercial use on those properties. And we're expanding the use of those. The number of acre, and this has historically not been what the city has actually done in interpreting general plan designations that have both commercial and residential use on them, specifically the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan.
Well, the city has not had a mixed-use land use designation. The commercial residential land use designation that you spoke of did not allow by right residential. So that by virtue was more so a commercial land use designation. The mixed-use land use designation, from a housing element standpoint, is primarily focused on housing development. And that's where the redistribution of the residential baseline for Measure E was basically put.
I am not convinced. I'm sorry. But that does not comport with how I would understand mixed use. Mixed use is for commercial use. The whole point of Measure E is to ensure that we're both residential and commercial uses.
Mixed use is primarily for housing. It is our HCD requirement to allow 100% residential in the mixed-use designation. And that is partly why there is a separation between density and floor area ratio for that particular land use designation.
I think maybe we should probably move on.
That's fine. Like I said, I'm not convinced. And I think that if you, if you look at how much acreage has been allowed for both the commercial mixed use, which allow for commercial usage, it actually exceeds the baseline for the 1996 commercial acreage baseline for Measure E. And I don't think there's been adequate analysis of that. Thank you, Ms. Menon Chair.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I have one clarification. A member of the public asked me about the housing element. So I wanted to make sure that we all understood. And my understanding is, without a housing element in place, we as a city can't have any say in the development that takes place in our city. And right now, our housing element is conditionally approved. And what we need is the general plan because we can't get it certified until we can change the zoning. And we can't change the zoning until we have a general plan. So my understanding is, without a general plan, we have no control over the building that is going to go on in our city. Is that correct?
Chair, I think what you're referring to is that after continual work with HCD and numerous revisions, we have received a letter from them that does say that our housing element meets most of the statutory requirements, except for the one that requires that we rezone our properties that are located on the housing element sites inventory. And since a lot of those parcels on the sites inventory are proposed as mixed use as part of this general plan, we cannot actually redo that rezoning process until the general plan were to be adopted. So there are some significant impacts should the city not have a certified housing element. It does include the things that you mentioned, whereas the state could come in and make decisions for local governments. It also includes the inability to apply for certain types of financing or for funding and grants. So just to reiterate what you said, yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Are there any other commission questions? Now we will go to public comments at this time. When we started, we had 15, and so the timeframe for each comment was three minutes, but now we're up to 23. So our schedule is for two minutes each. And I just want to point out, I know there's a lot of enthusiasm out there, a lot of passion, but I want everybody to feel comfortable voicing their opinion. So I'm going to ask that there aren't any cheering or booing or clapping, and let's just have a kind of a sedate meeting here. Okay. Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you.[1326.65] Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. (Music) Actually, you guys can review your speeches.
And would not be favorable to the already existing community. There are several other similar projects that are going on, or slated to be going on, on the corner of Rancho Canejo and Bento, at the side of the Old Caneo High School on Newberry Road and East Kelly. These projects are not necessarily in the backyard of a single-family home community. Therefore, to place a multi-story building on the Orchard property is just out of place for the surrounding communities. I happen to live on the corner of West Kelly and Orchard. I'm very much concerned about traffic and noise. I can't open my windows because of the noise that the traffic, you know, does on Orchard. I've lived there for 23 years, and it doesn't get any better, and it only gets worse, especially when they put in Dos Vientos, with a lot of traffic going up and down Orchard. And then also, at school time, people dropping off their children at school at Sequoia Junior High School, picking them up. I can't even get out of the street because there's so much traffic built up. So that's a concern when I think about if we ever had to do any evacuations down Orchard, it would be a disaster.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Steve McCollum, and after that will be Paul Phillips.
Ladies, too. I'm Steve McCollum, 2895 Shirley Drive, Newberry Park. That's the first Fox Meadows Homes built there with the red tile roofs next to the freeway. I moved to those homes in 79, so 44 years. What a change to the city. But the fact is, is that I'm a geologist by training, worked in construction and things like this. And so when I bought this home from Fox Meadows and Griffin Homes there, I went to the City Council, or the Planning Commission, or the Planning Department, and reviewed the general plan, met with some of the zoning people. Like the old Casa Caneo and our track, it was all designed for about four units per acre. And the next Fox Meadows track was built at four units per acre, and as part of that plan showed, the eastward extension of the Orchard parcel to be at four units per acre about. So the 37 acres there would equate to about maybe 150 residential homes, places for families to live. And frankly, that's what I understood that I was buying as a property owner there. That was my anticipation. That was what was betrayed to me by the city, and the general plan, and the developer. And frankly, when the developer bought the property, they bought it knowing that they could build the property out and provide for about 150 families. And I support that. I don't think they should have any less or any more. If they can put 150 residences in there, whether it be condos, or apartments, or frankly, honestly don't care about the utilities and the streets and everything, the traffic was all set up for about 150 family units to be present. And that's what I'd like to see done in that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Phillips, and after that will be Scott Horn.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Ah, wrong one. I've got a terrible cold, so. I'm a retired municipal attorney, 35 years. I'm rather new to this particular project and understanding it. I've appreciated the comments of Commissioner Ferris that he has made. I don't understand why the property, and I'm talking about the Orchard property specifically, is not just going to be designated in a PUD zoning classification, which would give the Board and the city a picture of what that property will be when developed, rather than all the words that are contained in your plan. A picture's worth 1,000 words. And as a city, then you know what you're getting from a developer. I don't understand why you would pass a comprehensive plan when there are items that still need to be worked on, because once you pass it, that's the law in the city. If you don't complete the rest of these unknowns, such as Commissioner Ferris has indicated, you're going to deal with that result. I don't understand why the city attorney would say, "We don't need any more clarification. If something is not appropriate in the resolution, that we can handle it down the road." I don't understand these things. You've got a responsibility. You've got a great community here. You need to address things properly so that there is no unknown, either on the Orchard project or on your comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. All right. Next, we have Scott Horn, and after that will be Rachel Kibbe.
My name is Scott Horn. I am a resident of Newberry Park. I've lived almost my entire life in the Caneo Valley. I am a Newberry Park High School graduate, a class of '79, and we say, "Go Panthers" in the big playoff game this Friday. My primary concern with the Orchard parcel has to do with it being an historic floodplain. The European settlers who came, the Olsons, the Borchers, these families knew it. They built the stagecoach inn and timber school around this floodplain and the seasonal wetlands that would happen. Fast forward to when modern age comes, Ventura County has a flood easement on the property to prevent all building on it in order to handle the groundwater capture of stormwater runoff from all the floods up to and including a 100-year flood. And we're hearing the talk about 100-year floods and not dealing with that issue. You have short memories. The county, in the last 40 years, Ventura County Flood Control Agency documented nine inundations where storm water overflowed the Royal Creek banks and Lake Newberry reformed, and an emergent wetland thrived for months. I remember them all. My neighborhood streets flooded each time. This is why such a seemingly prime piece of real estate has not been developed. The city did not include the Orchard parcel in the housing elements, if I understand correctly. It used to be in the housing elements, saying there could maybe be 20 houses with a theoretical list of about 140. You don't even have that property in your housing elements now. It's another reason not to have the Orchard property upzoned in such a way. In today's age of extreme weather, we can expect an atmospheric river or an El Nino storm to hit us directly again. If the city builds there, that floodwater will swamp the overdevelopment and surrounding neighborhoods as well. We have to address this threat before any land use changes occur. I recommend that you stop the land use change and carve it out of this process so it makes it easy for the city at the next round. Please.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. After that, Rachel Kibbe, and after Rachel will be Chantel Casanova, and I'm sorry if I'm butchering your names.
Hi, my name is Rachel Kibbe. I live in Newberry Park, and I'm here to speak about the infamous Orchard parcel. It's my understanding that this area is currently zoned for up to 100 single-family homes, and my objections to that are few and far between. But what I do object to is over 1,000 mixed-use units, more boxy, unsightly, three-over-ones, four-over-ones, with more vacant retail space for me to stare at. And speaking of mixed use, it's also my understanding that getting lending for a unit in a mixed-use property is very difficult. Most of these real estate transactions are cash-only because of that. So if you're looking at increasing housing affordability, that ain't it. I think everybody here knows that traffic from pretty much the grade to Lynn Road is already bumper-to-bumper at any given hour of the day, so that's really something to think about with wildfires. I think other people have mentioned that. But, you know, also, we should think about the strain that it would put on our only community hospital, Los Rojales. So that's something else to think about. And then, I guess my final point is that I have gone to the website that is advertised by the developer to start the conversation, as the sign says. And if you go to that page, it's blank. So it just shows you that the developer's intentions are one-sided here. He doesn't intend to involve our community. It's basically his way or the highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chantel Casanova, and after that will be Jean Grier.
Hi, my name is Chantel Casanova, and I have been a resident for 17 years in Newberry Park, commuting through to this area for 24 years. And I really appreciate having this forum to be able to come and talk. I am very, very new to this issue, and I'm sorry, I feel like I must have been sleeping under a rock that I've missed all of this. I do claim being a single mom, and I noticed the 45 days start June to August. If anyone knows, those kids are out of school. And August to September is when they go back to school. So I would like to ask for the archived materials, because I don't know how I missed it. I do read my, I'm not on social media, but I do read my mail. So with that in mind, I also understand NIMBY. I understand that there's a lot of time and consideration going into this. My concerns are really, really practical. Understanding this, I haven't heard, I'm sorry, I'll start with what I haven't heard. I haven't heard about the infrastructure. We've already been having rolling brownouts for electricity. I haven't heard about first responders and the expansion of services, their ability, or the Medicare. We have medical care. We have one hospital in the area. The increased exhaust from the cars that are going to be coming up between the canyons and trapped in there because of our unique ecosystem there with the grade and the mountains. Also, right there between Wendy and Orchard, the lanes coming over the grade reduced to three lanes until almost the 23 there. So you're, right there, you're going down to three lanes, and it bottlenecks already because of that, and you're obviously adding more. Also, when they were talking about the, you know, how they were calculating the volume for that, I didn't hear anything that addressed that at all. I don't know where the affordability comes in. I did spend some time reviewing previous recordings and the general plan. Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jean Grier, and after that, Todd Smith.
My name's Jean Grier, from Casa Caneo. I'm interested in the Orchard property. We lived, we bought our Casa Caneo brand spanking new in 1964. We lived there 59 years. We're putting it up for sale Saturday, just because of my street is going to be a thoroughfare. One of the only two ways into the Orchard property. We thought we were going to kick the bucket there, but it's not going to happen, and it's bothering us a lot. And do you folks realize how much this is going to impact your Thousand Oaks people that are around this Orchard proper, besides the Casa Caneo property? I'm selling only because, whether it's, the minute it's signed, the minute things happen, our property value is going to go down a big deal. I probably won't be around. I'm too old. It's going to affect our kids. I didn't live there for 59 years to throw away a couple hundred thousand dollars because of this. It's a bad deal. The only way in is Bella Drive and Alice Drive. Two years at least of construction, of construction and more houses, more houses, more people coming down my street. Emergency vehicles. I'm a retired fireman, LA City, for 33 years. I can't believe you're considering making two ways into that area back there. 30 or 40 years ago, Fox Hills put away something like $100,000 or $232,000 for a bridge over the Wash. We haven't seen it. All that traffic's come down my street. And I've been up here a couple times now. The question I always ask is, when it floods, and it's going to flood, I can guarantee it, who's responsible? My city? The builder, who you'll never find? Or the homeowner? And I talked to an insurance man and a couple of agents, and they said that probably they're going to be forced to get flood insurance.
Thank you.
Which will do away with their low-cost housing. Thank you.
Todd Smith, and then William Maple.
You know, I've heard the long-range planning, long-range vision, worst-case scenarios talked about here tonight. But when we talk, and when you hear about what these other people that have gone before me have said, you know, it's the perfect blueprint for a boondoggle. All you have to do is go down to Camarillo. They have their own little boondoggle. And long-range planning? Yeah, it's going to be long-range planning, all right. It's going to be long-range forever. And, you know, the people on Alice, I live on Alice, and just the Casa Caneos and the Fox Meadows, and the people on Michael as well, they're real concerned about that as well. We're, you know, we're definitely going to be, we were the first ones in there. You know, I've been there since '84, and we're going to just bear the brunt of this thing. And the developer, once the thing is done, he'll be living happily ever after over in Malibu. I think that's where he might be from. And we'll just have to live with the long-term vision of the project. Wish, I hope we can really consider it. It's a safety situation. It's not climate change, even though it's a climate issue. But when you've got the gauntlet coming down Alice and Bella, it's hard to even get people to really slow down now, because it's hard to get out of there. And now you'll, you know, we'll exacerbate that by, you know, a lot more density there. Who knows what the density is? It's, you know, 140 homes is what originally was, you know, allowed for, and we're talking We can do better than this. And I'm just going to say that the city really ought to buy this property and do something that the entire community will be proud of, and we ought to make this happen, and so that everybody can have a better community. And thank you very much.
Thank you. William Maple, and after Mr. Maple, Christine McCardle.
William Maple, resident, Newberry Park. Good evening, members of the Board. I just recently submitted tonight a copy, 12-page copy, of the original Thousand Oaks ordinance creating a cultural heritage board back in 1975. That's 11 years after we were incorporated as a city. So it's early vision of what we should be, how we should treat our cultural heritage. It also ensured that they had the tools to do so. They met publicly, they proactively looked at what was around, they hired the Ventura County Cultural Board, resulting in about 12 years, 10 landmarks. Then we went dormant for a decade, nothing was done. Then we ended up with three over about four years, and now it's been 20 years we've been rudderless without a cultural heritage board, no activity, nothing proactive. I'm hoping that will change. Unfortunately, there's never been a professional survey of the Caneo Valley. What's at risk? What might be potentially a point of interest, a landmark? And we, at this point, have a kind of a whack-a-mole approach to historic preservation. And from what I'm reading in this proposal, is that if a contractor feels there might be something of cultural value, he's to inform staff, and then he should hire, or she, an expert for that evaluation. We have strayed so far from the original 12 pages to just a few sentences of what historic preservation should be. I'll conclude with a couple of points. I do believe this plan goes far enough to ensure protection of our future cultural and historic assets. I also believe a cultural heritage survey for the entire Caneo Valley is in order. This would provide an enormous benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christine McCardle, and then Wendy Zimmerman. Is Christine McCardle here? All right, let's move on then. Wendy Zimmerman.
I'm no stranger to this planning process. I've been involved since the beginning, online, in person, sent many notes. My name should be familiar to you. Finally, we had a chance to get comments back from city with the most recent addition of the 2045 plans and EIR. Sadly to say, city's response was basically, "Talk to the hand. Your concerns regarding pollution and congestion and wildlife and other things, well, they're not involved in SEQA anymore, so we don't really care, so we don't have to respond to them in effective fashion." I was not the only one who got this kind of response from city. It's sad. It's annoying. It's rude. Needless to say, I live in Newberry Park, so my concerns have primarily been involved with Orchard. I'm fine with mixed use where it belongs, say, over at the Oaks Mall. There's plenty of pavement that doesn't have anything. There's commercially wide streets to get there. But mixed use is not compatible with our single-family residential area in Newberry Park on the south side of the freeway. As recently, I'm going to remind you, as Tuesday, November 7th, City Council approved a resolution, this one happened to come up regarding metal roofing, that basically said new dwellings and enlargement of dwellings needs to be compatible with existing neighborhoods. What part of mixed use and existing neighborhoods are the same? We are a project of one- and two-story homes that have been around since the '60s and '70s. We are being talked about having, within 100 feet of our backyards, three, four, maybe even five-story buildings with thousands of new people cluttering up our streets, polluting our arroyo, and noise. How many noisy stereos do you want to hear out of people's balconies from heavy, intense, 20- and 30-unit mixed use in your backyard in your single-family neighborhood? This is not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Danielle Borja.
Good evening, Chair McMahon and Planning Commissioners. Danielle Borja, President/CEO of the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here this evening on behalf of over 700 members of our chamber, and we certainly support the recommendation for the certification of the general plan, EIR, the adoption of the general plan, and the readoption of the housing element. Our chamber has been actively involved in the general plan process over the last four years, continually providing input and feedback on behalf of the business community from a collective voice of large employers, small businesses, as well as nonprofits. During this time, we have also witnessed the high level of community engagement the city has undertaken to craft this planning document and the exciting vision ahead for 2045. Housing is a top issue for our business community, and the land use component of the general plan will allow us to support our future workforce, attract and retain the young professionals that our businesses desperately need in an aging community. The community and economic benefit of this general plan significantly outweighs the short list of unavoidable impacts, and it's important to keep in mind that future development projects will also undergo environmental review and be required to mitigate their project-specific impacts. Please recognize the important work and thousands of hours from the General Plan Advisory Committee, from the community, from your commission, from the City Council, that has gone into this general plan update and support the staff recommendations this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, excuse me, we don't need any comments. At this point, we'll move to the Zoom speakers, and the first one is Jackson Piper. Please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Jackson Piper. I'm from unincorporated Newberry Park. Been here for over 30 years. I'm a housing activist in the area, part of Ventura County NIMBY, which is yes in my backyard, and also part of the Caneo Housing Coalition. I'm here to request that the Planning Commission today follow staff's recommendation and recommend to the City Council that this general plan update go forward and all the changes be made that were recommended by staff. I don't think this is a perfect document. There are a lot of things I would have liked to have seen, including more housing capacity and more of a strong attempt to improve safety for bicyclists and pedestrians on our streets. However, I do think there's a lot of good material in this document, both these documents, and I think that this would be a very big step forward towards meeting the needs of the community for more housing going into the future, and towards transitioning us towards safer streets for all users. So please, follow staff's recommendation and move this forward to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bertha Owen. Please state your name and city of residence.
They are no longer logged on.
Okay. Then we have Sean Anderson.
Same, they are no longer logged on.
Kinsey Flame.
Good evening, Planning Commission, staff, and community members. I want to express my gratitude for dedicating your time to develop a general plan that addresses the housing need of our community for the next 20 years. It is greatly appreciated that the plan includes various housing options and utilizes suitable properties. Given the current housing crisis, I have personally witnessed the demand for rentals in our area through my role as an administrator for a local group of 26,000 moms. The need for affordable housing for seniors looking to downsize, recent graduates, and young individuals starting their lives is undeniable. As someone who purchased a home near the Orchard property 11 years ago, I can't fathom the challenges faced by newly married couples, expected parents, small business owners like we were in today's market. I also have employees in college who have grown up here and are now left with a difficult choice of either continuing to live at home or moving out of state for independence. It is clear that Thousand Oaks is in dire need of more housing. Now I want to address the development of what I like to refer to as the rat lands in Newberry Park. As someone from this area, I am genuinely excited about the potential transformation of this space into a community hub, incorporating businesses, housing, and other elements that will bring us together in a positive way. Unfortunately, there has been a significant amount of misinformation circulating about this property, which is disheartening to witness. It is crucial for the Planning Commission and City Council to recognize the harm caused by allowing such misinformation to be spread through social media. In fact, during the last council meeting, my home was blacked out on a map, my personal information shared, leading to harassment after the meeting. I feel it is essential that everyone feels safe to share their options. Once again, I want to express my sincere appreciation for taking the time to listen to our comments and for your dedication and service to the community. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Timothy McDougall.
Good evening, good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. I'm just speaking as a private citizen to say that this general plan has been so thought-out, so vetted, so particular to the needs of our community, including housing, recreation, parks, and many other things that make this community such a wonderful place to live. I am a resident of Thousand Oaks, specifically in Newberry Park, and would love to see a hub that creates a type of dynamic for our emerging biotech, as well as other engineering facets and opportunities. This also provides housing in multiple levels. And I speak about housing and not just one particular avenue that we need, but we need housing at every single level, not just affordable, but we need workforce housing, and then we need luxury housing for people to also aspire to own. Another thing in the general plan is to make sure... plan is to make sure that we have a place for people to have a path for homeownership, not just a rental. However, the rental segment is important so that people can experience this wonderful place that we live and enjoy the opportunities that they might have by living here permanently. So I just encourage you to support this general plan as well thought of as it is, even though it's not perfect. I think we can agree that it's the best move forward, and I thank you for your service and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our last Zoom caller is Pauline Kurson. Please state your name and city of residence.
Pauline is no longer logged on.
Okay, thank you. So we have three written statement cards. Those are people who wanted to express their opinion but did not want to speak. Two of them are opposing the general plan, and one is for the general plan. So I'll pass these along to read, but I want them to be in the record. At this time, we'll go back to staff for follow-up comments.
Thank you, Chair. First, we'd like to thank everyone attending tonight who took the time to spoke. We heard a number of comments, in particular to the Orchard property. There were a number of comments on the policies, so there was a comment about the street connections, and this particular policy was removed, as the commenter mentioned, because the code specifically already does require objective standards, and the code already requires the street connections. So this particular policy is redundant. There was another comment mentioning FAR and density and a potential height overlay. As proposed, the policy limits buildings to 35 feet within 100 feet of the existing single-family homes. The rest of the portion of the property would be subject to development standards within the code and also those that would be created as part of a new mixed-use zoning district. There were several comments related to traffic and flooding, which would all be evaluated upon such a submittal of an actual project. There were a couple comments about housing affordability. Again, formal application has not been submitted for this project, so the exact affordability would not necessarily be determined at this time. However, the city council just recently adopted an inclusionary housing ordinance, and should a project be submitted for this site, that ordinance would apply. There was also comments related to historic resources and conducting a, or including a policy to conduct a citywide contact survey. Staff believes that this particular direction should be, direction would come, would need to come from the city council to evaluate the historic significance of properties that are 45 years or older, in particular because this would require additional funding allocations. And then, just as a reference to the commenter who mentioned that they didn't know where any of the materials are, all of the materials associated with this project are located on the project website, which is at www.t-oaks2045.org. And I'm going to hand it over to Matt Maddox to answer the question regarding the ATP.
Yes, commenter had a question about the active transportation plan and if projects would be removed or could not be removed, and I think that was a similar comment to a written response that we received as well. And I want to be clear that the general plan and the EIR themselves do not prohibit separate plans of the city to be updated and edited if need be, whether that's individual projects, bikeways, pathways, pedestrian access points. Those would be undertaken on a future project and would also have to go through a level of environmental review that doesn't undermine the existing general plan EIR. It would need to be updated if and when that is updated. So if that ATP is looking to be updated in 2024 as part of another discretionary action that would need to go through ultimately city council review and approval, environmental review would be part of that and confirmed. And if projects are either removed and/or added, that would be assessed on that basis.
Any more comments? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any comments or questions of staff? Not here? Okay, at this point, I will close the public hearing, and I will open the floor up for discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Link?
First, I'd like to say I wish Commissioner Lanson was here because he generally leads off these discussions, and he's far more eloquent than I. So I will do my very best, but I am going to fail every single one of you. My apologies in advance. I'd like to thank everybody present here this evening, first and foremost, because this is how this process is supposed to work. In fact, this is the most number of people we have seen in this room for probably two years, I would say. So again, this is democracy in action, and every single one of your voices is heard, I absolutely assure you. I'd like to also commend staff. This is a Herculean effort, and again, working for city government myself, I know you all have other things you do on a daily basis. This is not your sole project, and this by itself is a massive undertaking. So not only do I sympathize with you, I commend you for the fantastic work that you have done to this point. And this is, it has taken four years to get us to this point. I think I'd like to address the elephant in the room, and I do not have a short memory, and I do remember what I said two years ago. And there's certainly two things that I am big on. One is property rights, and the other is context sensitivity. And one of our mandates as commissioners is to ensure that the projects that we review are compatible. And I said it before, and I will say it again, I was never a fan of the mixed-use designation for this property. There are access issues, and I'm sure I'm rehashing things that I probably shouldn't be, but there are access issues with regard to this property, notwithstanding the fact that the entire property is under easement for Ventura County watershed. So it is encumbered. There are issues to contend with going through the future. I will support the general plan. The general plan, this effort is, again, it, we can't, in the words of one of our former fellow commissioners, you can't let perfect be the enemy of good, and there's a lot of good in this plan. In fact, there's a lot of great and a lot of perfect in this plan. So we can't ignore all the efforts that have been made up to this point. I think what's left for me is to, if I go through the process or at least have an understanding of what the process would be, to make a, an amendment potentially, to make the recommendation to city council that we keep the land use designation that was previously assigned if my commissioners, fellow commissioners would support it. But otherwise, I think that would be where I would go.
I'm, just to make sure I'm clear, because I'm not, are you saying you want to do change the current proposed use that's been proposed on this?
Yes.
Okay. So let me just step in there then, just because I want to go over a couple things. One is that the land use map, as you noted, has already been approved and endorsed by city council, so that would be one concern. Tonight's item is about the general plan, and it does also include the EIR and re-adopting the housing element, but it's a re-adoption of the housing element. And if you were to take your, your concept or your idea forward, again, my recommendation would be not to do that, but the reason why would be that could have tremendous effects on all the work that's been done so far. And the reason why I say that is because we have the housing element. It's already been brought to HCD for review. It is, again, hasn't been certified, but that's for the next step, which is the general plan adoption, and then we do the zoning to allow that to be then certified. But it has been approved based upon all these assumptions that were done. Moreover, the EIR was also done with assumptions, including the designation for this property. So the concern would be that that could have a rippling effect on our housing element, which would put that at risk. Again, the Orchard property has been part of the analysis, has been part of the analysis from the very beginning, and that analysis based upon the endorsed land use map was part of the housing element that was done. And so, again, your concept or your idea, I'm just going to just give you the concern I would have that that could have a rippling effect, not just to the general plan, but to the housing element as well.
Understood. So at this point, I think that it would be appropriate just to have the discussion. I wouldn't want to make the motion, but just to have the discussion, because I understand that there are going to be rippling effects as a result of that. I do, I do understand the gravity of that recommendation or consideration.
Are there any other comments to that? Commissioner Kettlehut?
Yeah, I would not support an amendment to this. I, and I want to thank everyone who came down today. It's hard. It's hard to do this, to come down and kind of stand up, and you're very passionate. I mean, we've, we've been seeing your comments. We read all 248 pages of your comments, and they're very passionate. But I, I would support the recommendation as written, because this is, this is the city's magnum opus. This is, this is something that these people, the city, but not just the people here, not just people here, and not just people here, but we've had four years of exhaustive meetings with the entire community, and we have to speak for everyone in the community. And so for that reason, I would, I would support the recommendation as written.
I'll make a small comment. I agree with Commissioner Kettlehut. I also want to say that this is about the whole city. It's not about any particular property, and any project that had to be, that was going to be built would be put before us, put before the county because of the flood control issue and the easement issue, all that. There are so many hoops before it even materializes in front of this group, and there will be a lot of opportunities to speak up about this property. We can't, we can't look at one property. We have to look at the whole city. And I was on the council, the commission, when we went through segment by segment, and it was arduous. It was a very long night, way past my bedtime, where we went through everything, and there were five of us here. And I, and subsequent to that, there's been all the outreach and everything else that has brought us to this point, and I don't want to change anything from all that process that has gone before us. So I will not agree to any amendment.
Thank you. So, first of all, again, I want to thank everyone's engagement and effort, and this is a great document for the future. I will agree, it's not perfect. And for those, I'll articulate some reasons why I can't support the general plan as presented at this time. I'll provide what, those reasons for it. A lot of the effort that I've, in being part of the general plan advisory committee, as well as providing information to the city leading up to this and prior to being on the Planning Commission, one of, a lot of things that I wanted to make sure must be done with this general plan. And I'm happy and heartened to see that many of those things have finally, even with the last final comments presented to this commission, have seemed to have made it, which is the honoring and recognition of the, the general plan amendments of the voters' role in approving amendments of certain types. And the Parks Initiative and SOAR ensure that if we are to change any parcels that are designated Parks Golf Course and Open Space to any other designation, they require a vote of the people. And from my reading, it looks like we've successfully managed to not have any changes in this plan. The curb line is also one of those in which it needs to be on the land use element because that's what Measure E or Measure W requires. Measure E was also approved by the voters, and it had a very specific role. And I'll describe in just reading the purpose of it. It says, "The city's general plan is a long-term guide to orderly development of the community, which plan should not be subject to reasonably increased development pressures. Based on the city's present build-out on the general plan, city council finds the city of Thousand Oaks at a point where the ultimate foreseeable residential commercial development, the city's planning area can be accurately predicted. City's infrastructure and public facilities were and have been designed based on the development projections of the city's general plan as in effect on November 5th, 1996. Public facilities can accommodate the planned foreseeable development. However, any increase in the residential density ranges or in commercial acreage over those presently shown in the land use element of the general plan will alter the character of the city and place an unacceptable burden on the city's topography and infrastructure. City desires to promote and improve local jobs, housing balance, and since land use changes to environmentally sensitive industrial uses do not place as great a demand on public services, roads, freeways and infrastructure, as do residential commercial uses, such changes are not a new policy direction requiring a vote of the community." So the voters have spoken that when it comes to evaluating whether changes in our general plan exceed the residential baselines or the commercial acreage baselines, if they do cumulatively, then it requires a vote of the public. While I might disagree or would like to see more details about the housing, the residential units, city has presented their case as to why it does not exceed the baseline. There's no such analysis for the commercial acreage. And if we compare the current general plan of what current, and by the way, I disagree that mixed use creation, a creation of mixed use designation actually does not constitute commercial acreage use. If you examine the parcel-by-parcel changes between the current general plan and what is proposed, there is significant increase, there's about 29 acres worth of increase on the east, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, east of the 23, mostly the Duesenberg, but because we're also lifting restrictions on what was placed on the commercial and residential acreage in the Thousand Oaks specific plan, you're actually increasing additional acres that now have commercial usage. There's about seven acres or so north of 101. Then there's a reduction of about 25 acres or so south of the 101. But if you include the Orchard property, which I don't exactly know how many of the 36 acres will going from residential to mixed use, which adds commercial acreage, you're talking about a net increase of about 40 or 45 acres of commercial acreage. And that is in excess of the baseline that has historically been there. At best, there might be a bank of about four acres or so based upon previous general plan amendments. But that inclusion of that many acres over in this part takes, needs serious study to see whether this plan actually exceeds the commercial acreage baseline under Measure E and requires voter approval. My recommendation is that there needs to be a revisment of the properties that are included, that are included in mixed use, which would include removing the Orchard property from its mixed use designation, or at least the portion that isn't currently commercial from that. And those, I believe, are the reasons why it can't be approved as is unless the desire is to, in fact, have the city council approve it and take it to the voters for their, their approval under Measure E. There are some additional things that I'd prefer to see. As I mentioned, I think because it took until right before the hearing to get what I think might be the last parcel of Parks Golf Course and Open Space to not be changed from this. I don't know if, with all the scrutiny on it, whether we've missed one, and I would not want that to be changed, at least stating the intent that, that that isn't the intent for doing this, is to change it in its entirety. I do believe that it would be prudent to keep a policy regarding locating structures or not relocating, basically not locating structures in a 100-year floodplain until such time as the floodplain is no longer an issue for parcels. And things that I would ask to be done, I would like to see an annual meeting of the Cultural Heritage Board, just to ensure that there's at least one forum every year to where the public knows that they can come and say, you know, city ought to take a look at this and see if it's worth considering for historic preservation down the road. I, I think this, there's a lot here, and when we talk about change for a general plan, there's a need for change, to be honest, for everybody, there is a need to change. To be honest, for everybody, there is a need to change. We have a housing crisis in California, we have been allocated a regional housing needs assessment in which our current general plan actually doesn't, doesn't accommodate it. We need to actually change it to meet housing needs. We've been under, indexed in multifamily housing in this city for some time, and the move toward finally a little bit of mixed-use in this, in this, in the, in the city is probably a prudent direction for us to take. But I have been concerned about the scale and the pace of the change that, that is needed on this. But my primary concern is that I think the plan as is requires voter approval under Measure E into the commercial acreage baseline, and I would support removing the Borchardt property from a mixed-use designation, but primarily because we need to reduce the amount of commercial acreage if you want to end up approving this plan without voter approval. So those are my points of the discussion. Thanks.
Are there any other comments? Do we have a motion? Commissioner?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution based on the findings contained therein, recommending that City Council, one, certify the final program, general plan EIR 2022-70558, including a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, California Environmental Quality Act findings effect, and statement of overriding considerations; and, two, approve the general plan amendment 2019-70760-GPA with the revisions included in the addenda and errata memo; and, three, readopt the housing element update 2018-70723-HSG.
Thank you. Will the secretary please prepare us for a vote? Commissioner Ferris?
No.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Commissioner Link?
No.
Chair McMahon?
Yes.
Motion fails 2-2. Commissioners Link and Ferris dissenting. Thank you. Want to express my appreciation to everybody who came out, to everybody who spoke, to everybody who did a written comment. This now, this is a recommendation, or not a recommendation, it will be going to the City Council with, I guess, without our recommendation. So if you wish to speak again at the City Council, you may, and that will be publicized. Thank you all for coming. Moving on to department reports, appears we have none. And item nine, Commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Are there any? No. Staff update, Mrs. Zelaya. Are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Yes, tomorrow evening, the City Council will have a public hearing on the Janes Marketplace Hotel that was heard at their last meeting, Planning Commission last meeting, and consider calendar item to ratify the private citizen member of the Caneo Open Space Conservation Agency, COSCO, board. On December 5, City Council will have a public hearing on the general plan, which you just heard tonight, and December 12, its reorganization. Moving to item 10B, items on the upcoming Planning Commission schedule, there are currently no items scheduled for December 4 or 11. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all again. We will now adjourn to the next meeting, December 4, 2023, at 6:00 p.m.